Don't forget to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com/fortyninecountynewstv.
We stand to, for our president's allegiance, and we will call him a leader. Let's have a word frankly. While in heaven we thankful for you blessing us so much Lord, and we thank you for all that you given and help us, let us have and enjoy it. Lord, we're especially thankful this time of season we're about to come to Thanksgiving, Lord, that we might be thankful even more so to things that we have. And pray that we might remember those, Lord, that are less fortunate. Pray for those, Lord, that have needs that we do not realize and understand, Lord. But we ask that your continued guidance over us and your comfort and your looking after us and caring for us. We pray that you might be with us day as we conduct this meeting, and Lord, that all that we do might be in keeping with our will, and we might seek your guidance in all that we do. We thank you for this opportunity to serve the people of Marion County, and we ask your blessings on us as we endeavor to do so, that we might seek your guidance in all that we do. Forgive us for our failure, Lord, we ask you same in our holy and precious name. Amen. I plead with allegiance to this flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the midst of liberty and justice for all. Now, meeting orders. First off, we have, uh, we need a motion to approve, approve the minutes that we just signed and read, that I have a motion to approve these minutes.
I make a motion.
Motion of second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Also, we approve the claims, uh, it's permitted to have a motion to approve the claims.
I make a motion to approve the claims.
Have a motion.
Of second.
Yes, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Good to see you people today out, uh, come to our board meeting. We begin off today, I think Ms. Cheryl Robertson, uh, has, uh, first on the agenda.
Do I?
Well.
Do I stand?
Yes ma'am, just say.
I wasn't sure.
Sanders said, whatever, whatever makes you comfortable.
Um, as you can see, I rescue, I have a foundation, it is a 501(c)(3). Um, I currently fund it all myself. Um, the city of Winfield has donated twenty-five hundred dollars at one time. Um, in the last six months, I have found a rescue in Pennsylvania that will take my puppies small and up to six months. So that has really helped me a lot. I have rescued by myself over three hundred dogs. That's, you can't imagine how many liters of puppies I've taken. Um, I don't try to dog them out here. The state of Alabama just don't, they don't take care of their animals here. And in Pennsylvania, they are so strict, there's no breeding, their bedding is a must. If you're caught breaking any of their, uh, rules, laws, guidelines, you're fined. And if, um, you don't pay your fine, it's attached to your, a utility bill. Uh, your utilities will be turned off until you pay it. So, um, I did manage to get some of the, um, ordinance in Winfield changed to where it would protect the dogs more. But I, we desperately need spaying and neutering, it's just a must. They're just running everywhere, starving, I mean, it's, it's a very bad situation. And, um, everybody doesn't scan the ditches like me, you know, and I, you know, and that's fine. But, um, I have my, of myself, twenty-seven that I've rescued and kept them. They were in such bad shape that by the time I got them healed, they were just, I, I couldn't let them go. Right now, I have forty-four at my house. They're all going up north in the next two weeks, except for mine. Um, I did pay for the bedding and everything on them before they left. I am here to ask the council, um, and what the city will do is based on what the county will do. To fund a hundred spaying and neutering out of, oh my gosh, I can never remember this town's name. It's on my proposal, the seventy dollars, um, what?
Double prong, yes.
Yes, yes, they will do it for seventy dollars a, a piece. It's usually a hundred and fifty dollars to spay and neuter. So that's, that's a wonderful deal. They have pick up and, and bring back, so it, you know, at that price, and so it, it really makes it an excellent deal. So what I would like is, I know you can go low, so I'm gonna start high, is the county to pay for a hundred spaying and neuters. And we desperately, y'all need a shelter, so that, a humane society, a shelter, something. Um, Fayette has, they have great names, it's awesome. But they do euthanize, and in my opinion, a lot of what they do euthanize, they could get those dogs up north. It takes work, but they could get them out and save these dogs. So that's my plea. I mean, it's just need.
You know, forty-four dogs, you're out.
Right now. And twenty-seven are mine, and the other ones are going up north in the next two weeks.
Those are these going up north, aren't they?
There's strays that I've picked up, and they'll go to the rescue, and they, um, they don't cage or kennel or anything. They, they have fosters that, they're just, they are a big, um, rescue, and they can afford, you know, to take care of all these dogs, and get them out to fosters, whereas we don't have many fosters, we have no one that will foster at all. Just don't, you know, they just don't do it.
Where do you, do you pick up these dogs, or are they bringing?
I started just getting them, Donnie and I both, we started just getting them off the road, where they were in such bad shape. And now, a lot of people call me to get liters of puppies, or, the, I had a Ewan police officer last year. I rescued two fosters in, riding Ewan in the city limits, that was, they were on a chain. It was so hot, they had no food or water or anything, and they were just starving. I went to the city hall, and the officer went straight up there and told them that they had to surrender the dogs. So, you know, sometimes somebody that's starving their dog will let me take them. But, you know, it, it's, it's a bad situation. The state says that you have to provide food, water, medical as needed, adequate shelter from the elements, that's exactly what the state law says. And we don't, we don't push it, we don't make it mandatory. You have to have a rabies tag, you have to have that dog, um, a rabies shot, that's mandatory. Um, anytime I take one of my dogs to the vet, mine, if it's time, I can't leave that vet without giving them the rabies shot. Um, it's mandatory, and the vets can be, you know, fined for it. There's just so many ways that we could stop it, we could find people, we could put a limit on dogs, we could, there's so many.
Yep, you still gotta have enforcement.
Yeah, um, and I don't wanna step on anybody's toes, but law enforcement, it, they take an oath to abide by the law. And the state law, forget the ordinance, even if we got away from the ordinance, um, the state says. You know, we have to go by the law, we're supposed to, and the state says you have to provide, they have to have that. I, I don't understand, and I've had this argument with the city so many times. I don't want law enforcement to give the free dogs, they don't have to, if they would just enforce a rabies tag. Because so many people are not gonna give their dogs, they're not, they're not gonna bet them. And they could write them a warning, they could, it takes just a little bit. And then if they go back out, then they fine them. You know, it's, that's a win-win. It, and if a dog is not being taken care of, I don't, I don't want them to throw the dog in the back of their car and, you know, call somebody, call the humane society, but they don't have, they have no facility, call me. I would rather save that dog and get that dog out where it has a life than die from starvation. I mean, I, I had an officer go two weeks ago, someone called in to Angie in the city hall, and complained that there were twelve puppies running the street, on Freedom Street. And, um, Angie asked me if I'd go out and look inside, I said, well, you gonna have to send an officer out first. So they wrote the report, and the officer went out. He came back and said that the dogs were healthy and had water and food. Well, I went back a little while later, the dogs, they had no water or food, and I talked to the people, and they had no food. These dogs had not been fed yet, they had no food. And their water buckets, they had two, were ice cream buckets. The officer didn't wanna deal with it, did not wanna deal with it. So instead of coming back and stating the facts, those dogs would have sat over there and starved to death. Um, Rusty Barnes stopped and gave them fifty pounds of dog food. Um, they were so starved, you couldn't feed them all at once because they were fat so bad, they were starving. Um, I have given them three hundred pounds of dog food. Um, I went and I got all the dogs, twelve puppies and the mama dog. Um, I got them all up north, the puppies, and had the mama dog spayed. It didn't cost those people anything, there'll be no more dogs over there. And I come up to there yesterday, and it was so peaceful, it was just so peaceful, you know, and when you let dogs run loose like that, somebody's gonna get bit. Or, you know, somebody's gonna get the dog, take it off, where it's gonna die, it, it. You know, if the city allows dogs to run loose like that, and these dogs were basically wa, I mean, wild, and they, they get, they bite somebody. It's not just gonna be on the people. If someone has called in and the city hasn't done anything, then that's gonna be on the city. I rescued twenty-seven dogs from boarded up house two years ago, twenty-seven. Um, everybody had been called to come and get those dogs, they had no food or water, they were living in their own waste. I got all those dogs out and sent them to Mendus, to a rescue. People would have let all twenty-seven of those dogs die in that house.
Are these places where you send them, label the boarded up dogs out, actually get them?
No, they have rescues, that's why.
I know, but they just keep them, they don't keep them just.
Oh, no, they get, adopt, adopters. Um, because of their laws, they don't have dogs running around and plentiful, go to somebody's house and grab a dog. They, um, I send them to the rescue, they get them to a foster, a lot of times they don't have adopters waiting on them, I send pictures of everything. They go up, they either go to a foster, or they go straight to an adoptee. They do a background check and a house inspection before those dogs go anyone's home. So that, they've really got it together.
Well, definitely they have, they do more.
Now, they have ton, you know, these are million dollar rescues.
Yeah.
And, um, but it doesn't take a million dollars to save a dog. And today, at the end of our day, six thousand dogs will be euthanized in the United States. Six thousand dogs. And they're being killed because they were born. That's it.
Yeah, that's true, that's true too, but that's, it's not a dog's fault, you know, but it's, it's, uh, you say it's better than starving deaths in some cases.
It is, I can't, I, I can't fathom starving to death, I, I.
So you, what you, you saying, for a hundred dogs at seventy dollars each is seven thousand dollars.
It is.
How much, how long would it be before you need to, I'd say a hundred more pages?
Well, a hundred dogs is, is a lot.
A whole, going seven thousand dollars, that.
Yeah, well, I mean, I don't wanna take advantage of anybody, and I appreciate anything anybody can do. But, oh gosh, there's just some, somebody, you got, we gotta start somewhere, and we don't, I don't think anyone has the money for a shelter. And I think they're spending, Fayette, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for that shelter. Um, and it did come from the county commission. Um, but if we could just start somewhere, maybe by the time all, it'll take a while to get a hundred cats and dogs done. Maybe by the time, then maybe something could change here and, and something could happen, you know? That could be a positive.
Yeah. I think you talk, you talking about, you know, when you said Pennsylvania, so I think we're talking urban areas, where we're talking rural area down here, and people, people have different view, I mean, uh, dog, there are more, more dogs run loose, uh, because there's much more air farms run loose.
That's true, that's true. But a lot of reason that, well, the reason there's so many dogs is that, especially in the county, people just let them breed and breed. And if we could get in there and stop it, I mean, I'll have people go to comment and say, well, can you take a liter of puppies? And, yes, I can, can we get your dog digs, yes, well, she's already had seven liters. Jesus, I mean, this should have been digged six liters. So if we could just stop some of it, there's nothing worse.
Yep.
Than seeing a dog die slow down.
We, the county spends, I'd say, in excess of thirty thousand dollars a year on dog control, that'd be right, Brooke or Wes.
Approximately thirty thousand.
Is that animal control, that's out of Winfield? Okay, I, animal control is an okay thing, I get that. But, um, sticking a needle in a dog's arm is not the way.
Well, I think you gonna find out, it's all, yours is your okay thing, we can't have a perfect thing.
No, we can't, you're right.
We're doing the best that we can do, I think, in the county level to, uh, to do, be as, uh, uh, good to the dogs as we can. You know, we don't, uh, we don't put them up starving deaths, we do.
No, uh, we kill them.
So we're talking, well, that's.
I mean, that's what they do, animal control kills dogs.
Well, yes ma'am.
Not all of them.
No.
No, well, some get out, some get out.
Ninety percent, ninety percent. And I, I will go so far as to say this, last year maybe, I asked the city if we could, uh, I'm not on animal controls back. I mean, I don't wanna talk bad about them, but to take your animals in kennel, it's a job. And I understand they don't wanna do that, I understand that. But, um, I, um, propose setting up a Facebook page. There's so many people that don't even know animal control exists, and they pick up every dog. If it doesn't have a rabies tag or collar, in the city and the county, they pick up every dog. Doesn't matter if it's healthy, they pick it up, they take it, they're supposed to hold, they euthanize every Thursday. Maybe if some of the people could get together and go watch them stick a needle in their dog's arm, they're sitting there going, you know, that might be a really educational tool. But there's no reason unless the dog is sick and dying that animal control couldn't get those dogs up north, there's no reason. It's work, it's paperwork, it's work, but there's no reason we should be killing dogs at animal control that's healthy. So I propose a Facebook page. Set it up, take a picture every time you bring dogs in, because you're, they're picking up, not intentionally, they're picking up somebody's dog. Dogs get lost, you know, dogs visit, that's just how it is. In the perfect situation, everybody would have a fence in their garden, but that's not the way it is. So they're picking up, um, people's dogs. Some kid is missing their dog because animal control has picked it up because it was in the woods hunting a squirrel. I mean, that's basically, they could, that's what they do, not intentionally. And then they euthanize every Thursday. And I've never had the heart to ask them what they do with the bodies. But euthanizing a helpless, healthy dog, forget about the sick ones, is wrong. It's wrong, and if we're paying somebody to kill dogs, that's wrong.
What is wrong for the people to put those people in position to have to do this?
True, and that's why I said I'm not.
Why are the people putting them in a position to do that?
That's right, it is, and see, it's on the people.
But it, when you get to this point, there's so much that we can afford to do. I know we're, we've, uh, we, we're at the point of some people of, uh, Farm Federation, other people like us are cutting air funding because of, uh, uh, our lack of funds that we have, so we're, we're very much strapped for money when we're spending in excess of thirty-five thousand dollars a year to do the best thing we can do for dogs, uh, uh, unless anyone else have a thought or question on that.
That's not the best thing we can do, that's why I say, they refuse to put a Facebook page up. How difficult can that be?
Well, we might question about that, possibly doing that, you know, if it's, uh, so.
I mean, do y'all keep up, do you have a, a number of how many dogs they euthanize?
Yes ma'am, we get a list of how many, each month and what size, and cause it's more, uh, there's, uh, cause more to do.
I know people turning liters of puppies, you know, because they don't want them.
Yes ma'am.
They don't want them, that's not an excuse, that, that's no excuse, find those people, I mean.
I understand, I understand.
You know, it's just.
Yes ma'am, and I know, I appreciate your heart for caring, I mean, it's, it's better than just, you know, just letting them, but.
You know, eighty-eight thousand dollars is what I've spent in five years.
Yes ma'am.
Um, that seven thousand, and like I said, I, I started high, you know, of course I would take, you know, but that's, that's nothing compared to eighty-eight thousand dollars. And I'm not a rich person, but I'm not gonna let a dog starve to death.
Do you, uh, have any questions, uh, any more suggestions? I don't know, you know, I say it was, our budget is close to what it is, but, yes ma'am, I, I don't know anything we can, we can suggest that it's a Facebook page, you say it, try to ship some of them out, or see if there's possibility some of that, other than that, uh, I'm, I'm, we're doing what the state asks us to do, I was got, as far as animal control.
Yes ma'am.
Yeah, I hooked, I hooked that up, it's just, um.
And the city's over five thousand, and five thousand have some responsibility also?
Oh yeah, they do, the city, they certainly do.
Yes ma'am.
And I've been to them, and they told me, the mayor told me, um, Friday, to come back today and let him know what the county decided, and they would go from there. But, um, you know, I mean, I, I'll be the first to say, I, I'm extreme with it, you know? My dogs stay in heated and air-conditioned dog houses, I have a dog house that's eight-hundred spread feed, and it's like an apartment. And I know that's extreme, and I don't want everybody's dog to live like that, the park is clean with, but yes, I could live like that. But, um, I shouldn't be the only one, does the commission not get money for a shelter person, no? I, I just know that Fayette, that, you know, that was, had funded it, and that's why it was.
We set aside acreage for the, uh, people who want to build a shelter, we'd give acreage, but that's never been. Has never been.
There's some money, nobody will, you know, nobody will help, and that's not your fault, you know? But, um, I just think the city and the county could come up with some, some of that, just spay and neuter.
I sympathize with you and appreciate your concern with, uh, uh, doing what you do, but, uh, at this point in time, it's where, as I say, we are, over about thirty-five thousand dollars a year doing our part. And unless some of these feel different, uh, that, uh, that's about all our budget will stand.
Okay, well, if, since that's, um, y'all's the only part that you have to do, what about the police department? What about, why, why does no one else? If y'all have to provide animal control, why does the police department, if you're following the law, why do they not have to follow the law? Why, I don't really know what kind of jurisprudence.
They probably do in the towns over five thousand, they do some, picking up something, I'm not sure.
Yeah, but the, though, state law doesn't say if you got five hundred or five thousand, it says you have to, you have to. And the, the council of Winfield sent a thing that I was making up that, and Todd actually researched it, and it, it's a fact. You know, so it's not just on y'all, it's not on me, it, it's on everybody. You know, and the, the county commission won't do anything as far as helping with spaying and neuter, it's that.
At this point in time, I don't, uh, uh, as I say, we're having the possibility of cutting people back, it's, uh, it's, we've been, uh, your, uh, people, helps people with their, uh, light bill and their rent, and their buying food, and also the farmers, uh.
Does that come out of the county commission then?
Some, yes ma'am, some of that, uh, we, we, uh, have, uh, several different state agencies to, for the people of Marion County. But it's always with, with the people, for the foods for the people, and the rent for the people, light bills for the people.
Yeah, I knew that word.
Yes ma'am, and also for farmers, uh, support.
Okay, let me just say one more thing, and then I will let you go. What about people think that dogs, nobody deal, I get that, so people are just that way? You know, I, you could have a son in the war, your daddy, which, your, your sister, your daughter. There are dogs every day that go in ahead of these men and women, that save these men and women's lives. Law enforcement, drug dealers would not, law enforcement, there would be more dead if it wasn't for dogs. The elderly, nursing homes, medical reasons, it goes on and on and on. So we will use a dog and let it risk killing itself for us, but we won't help the dog.
Yes ma'am, I'm sure you agree with that.
Oh, yeah, it's a fact, I mean, we see it all the time. We see soldiers by the war come home and fight to bring their, their dog home.
Yeah.
After they have fought for their country, they have to fight for their dog. Dogs aren't just made for the yard, they're made for people.
Yeah. As I say, at this point in time, we're, we're, I don't think, we're unable, we're unable to help you with anything because of lack of funds, uh, to do so. But I appreciate your concern, appreciate you coming before us, and we're aware, and we're looking to this Facebook page, uh, Facebook. I appreciate you, your job you do, I do, thank you ma'am. Thank you. We have a couple of situations here where, uh. I think I told we talked about that, so hold off, we'll have something. We have a couple of situations here, uh, for a, a rate of pay, uh, needs to be adjusted. Uh, for a couple of, being working county, uh, ten more of your, uh.
Yes.
We are men.
Uh, it'd be for Mike Davis, was, he was the commissioner, he's gonna be working for me full-time. Until after the first of the year, around the first of the year. I just need to have the old case set his pay, same as my other men's sixteen oh six an hour.
We need to do it one at a time, Scott, or, or is this, uh, is this, uh. Anything that can, if this is permissible, uh, to, and, to the, uh, we have the ominous pay bills, does this interfere with this? Or do you have this right to do?
It shouldn't interfere with that, I, I, I think I would do it one at a time.
Yes. So I have a motion to, uh, to adjust, uh, Mike Davis's rate of pay, uh, to the same as your other men are making.
It's sixteen oh six an hour.
Sixteen oh six an hour. Do I have, will you make that a motion to have a second? Thank you. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, opposed likewise. Okay. Now, so, uh, Mr. Ballard, uh.
Yes, I'm gonna raise him the same pay as the other man.
The same pay as the other man?
He's operated for man, and he's been working twenty-two year.
So. Do I hear a motion that, uh, just be corrected?
I'll make such a motion.
For a second, I'm sorry, you make a motion, a second. All in favor, or any discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, opposed likewise, I'd say it. We are, we're, we have the information here on our C three, whether to continue, to continue funding C three. Uh, pay the nineteen, uh, two thousand and nineteen membership in the C three. Uh, you have, there's, uh, information in your packet, uh, on this, is there any, uh, discussion on this? Or do I have a motion that we continue?
I'd like to discuss it. What have, what have they, what have they done, I know it's C three, and I know what counties it represents. What have they done for Marion County? How many years have we paid into it?
Well, we, how long has it been, uh, C three, uh, what, four, five, uh, or was it C D F?
It was created, what, probably what, two thousand nine, two thousand ten?
So eighteen years, or eight years?
Eight years.
I guess what I'm trying to ask, what's the free, what have, what have we accomplished? Thirty thousand a year.
He hasn't been before, how long has it been since, uh, dated, just here with, uh, update on, uh, uh, unemployment, uh. Jobs. I think there've been, you know, I, I think there've been some improvement, uh, I think that the employment rate's like four, four, four percent in Marion County now. And, uh, uh, jobs are available if we, if there are people there to take them, so, you know, we, we can't blame the whole thing on. Uh, eighty percent of your, uh, uh, employment comes from old jobs, uh, putting on new people, so. You know, I, I think there's been some improvement, uh, some, uh, to our county, because most people want a job, can find a job.
This C three is too, well. To bring in new jobs and stuff, and I think that's what the county is basically asking, what, what have they done? To bring in new industrial to, to the county, and there's, uh, three counties, if I understand right, that pays this.
Yeah.
Uh, the, the other two pay the same, plus the cities?
I'm sure they pay the, um, the same as.
It's all based on population.
Yeah, well, it's, uh, probably same for cities, well, I'm not familiar with what, uh. Do you, are you thinking what's paid from Lamar or paid?
If it's not thirty, it's something like twenty-five, twenty-five, thirty, something along those lines.
We're probably paying around a hundred thousand a year for this service, or, or more?
Well, the counties pay that much, and then the cities pay as well, um, and each of your larger cities pay a pretty good amount as well, so it's a.
Are we, are we seeing results from this over a hundred thousand dollars to come in? For the people to pay this, you know, that's a lot of money, when you're on a tight budget. And, uh, if it's eight years, is it, uh, justifying itself to pay this money out for someone like this? Or, you know, there's different agencies that will recruit industries, and that's my question, are they, are they doing a good job? And, uh, you know, are we getting results from it? I don't know if, if we need to talk to Mr. David, uh, or what, to see what is, you know, he may have something laid out that's, that's coming, and he might could explain, like I said, what, what have they done for us lately? That's what people wanna know, what have you done for me lately, you know?
Well, I think it'd be appropriate to have David come, since y'all haven't met him as a board, as a commission, for him to come and, and make the proposal to y'all as well.
Uh, that's my thinking, and I think that this kind of money that you're asking for, if you need it, you need somebody here representing you, telling you why you need that money, and why you need to keep giving that money.
Well, there's nothing pressing today. It's not pressing today, nothing's got to be bugged down.
I'd like to see what, some more numbers than others than just that one number. You know, what's that number done?
Now, is it, uh, am I hearing you that we next board meeting, or, we'll meet, which will be the first meeting next, uh, in December, have next board, they'll come, bring us, uh. Figures and why we need to continue, uh, the.
That's my thought.
Okay. People has.
Make a motion, we table this?
Right, so we'll table this, uh, we got a motion to table this until, uh, first meeting, we get David thrown out here to.
I second it.
I second it here, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Okay. Uh, next on the agenda is Jimmy Mills' medical leave, we do know that Jimmy is, uh, still, uh, unable to go back to work. Uh, his leave was, that was, uh, uh, the drone up broke until part of the point in time that, uh, the. Commission saw fit that he returned to his job, that he vacated to run for a county commission.
Um, yes, the original was that he could take the leave to be able to run for county commission. And he had some health issues at the end of that. And when he got back from what would have been his leg, he had a doctor's appointment, he's still having some issues, so it looks like maybe the middle of January.
So we need to see if the same, uh, his, the job, the, uh, the person that vacated their position to take his position. Is still able to stay in his position until a point in time he comes back.
We've been in correspondence with Barbara and Stephanie, as long as y'all are in favor of that. Then Barbara says the state can assist with the chief of praiser position with the county, and Stephanie would be able to still continue to help until there's a resolution on the impact issue.
So do I have, uh, is there any discussion on this, about, uh, allow him to, to get well, to come back to work, so I think. Go back as they were before.
I'll make a motion. I'll say.
You have a second, motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, opposed likewise. The sales tax collection resolution with the State Department of Revenue versus R D S, uh, or, we got also information on this, uh. Is there any, uh, do we need any, uh, update from, uh, Brooke or Scott on what, uh, what we're talking about here? Can you do offer, uh, a better rate than, uh, states, or, um, than, uh, R D S is opposing to us now, uh, proposing to us? Do, you have, have any questions?
Are we currently owned the R D S deal right now, to the state, right Scott?
Yes sir.
Okay, wow. I think in reading some of this, that, uh, there've been some, uh, additional charges and some money that's, we've been overcharged, I think, with. You may know more about this, that, well, I know you know more about it than I do, but, uh. And what, what they're asking is if we wanna stay with this company that does this, or if we wanna go with the state method, right?
Yes sir, that's right.
In your opinion, which is the best, and which way can the county save the most money through this?
We originally left the state and went to the predecessor of R D S because of some deficiencies with the state. And R D S was better for some time. I think in the past few years, there's been some growing concern about that, and the state has, I guess, re-upped their efforts in their collection. It would be easier for us if, and I don't mean to speak out of school, but I think it would be easier for us if the state collected it.
Has the R D S, this been like twenty years that we've been using the system that we're using, some, something in the neighborhood of twenty years?
Correct.
And, uh, they charge for this, the same as the state, but are they not higher than the state?
Yes, I think more about they're higher than what the state is.
So your recommendation is to go with the state?
Yes sir.
In this reading, what we've got on it, that's, that's my opinion on it, uh, they can, uh, it would be cheaper for us to use the state. And, uh, the rates would be cheaper, you know, and, uh, according to this, with the flaws that we've had in it, we would gain. I mean, last year, I believe the way this is wrote, maybe thirty to forty-five dollars a year by flipping over to the state than using the R D S system.
That's right, yes sir. And R D S has changed hands a couple of times, and in the last year or so as well, so, um, with the state, at least we know who we're dealing with. But I think it, I think it comes out to be cheaper for the county.
The state?
Yes sir.
Thank you.
Any other comments, or will we take a motion?
I'll make a motion to change it.
Make a motion to go with the state.
State.
A second. Just a second, do we have any more discussion? Will we? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Talking now about the restoration of concrete around the courthouse. I really wish there was someone here that would, uh, represent to tell us exactly what we're talking about, because evidently, there's some difference between. Uh, not, no, no difference in the removing of the old cover, but there's some difference between, uh, the overlay that, uh, they're gonna put back on it. Are they, are they, are they working on it now, or they gonna, uh, when are they gonna start this?
The reason this is on the agenda was to find out if y'all were interested in the overlay that's currently there through the years of wear and tear and cleaning of the area. Some of the places have chipped, you've had people that have tripped on it. This is just an estimate to find out if this is something that y'all would be interested in doing around the courthouse, that would be paid for out of capital improvement. Um, if you're interested, because of the price, you would have to get bids from several different vendors, but this is just kind of like a, are you interested in doing something like this?
Well, have these people deemed it to be unsafe, uh, or concrete, or just, they saw, saw the possibility of a job that they want to, uh.
I'm sure on Marion, it's a possibility of a job, we have had people get their shoe caught in it and trip before to the overlay.
So they're, they haven't been, uh, uh, the town, or no one has, uh. Got these people to do the rest of that, so.
They've approached us, and did a bunch of.
This gentleman, um, has done some work with the Board of Education on the new gym here in Hamilton. So I know he's done some work with First Baptist Church in Hamilton. And as he was going through the community, he was just looking at the different areas, and he walked in and said, uh, if this is something y'all would be interested in, let me give you an idea. He let y'all look at it.
I'd like to see us table this until such an important time that they could come and. And present their, uh, what they, what their plan is.
Yes sir, Black Brooke says we'll have to beat it out.
Yeah.
I didn't look at all of it this morning, but I did go by and look at the, uh, what they're talking about. What, what, what it looked like to me is the cover where you're stepping and walking, there's spots on it that's not covered. And it, it's not up where you're gonna trip and fall, but cold weather coming on, there may be some ice patches on that where the other will be. And, uh, the only other issue I seen, and I didn't go to the, just the one end on this end. I don't know how it was done, but where you walk in at, they tapered off on your side, and they left a drop of maybe three to four inches, and there's some elderly people have stepped off that, and, you know, nearly stumbled or fell. Uh, but thus far as the concrete work, you know, and, and unlike y'all, I think, uh, you know. Need to look at it and address it, and see what all they, what we need to do to make it safe. Cause there are a lot of people in and out there every day, and especially the elderly people, that we need to take care of.
I'll make a motion, we table this too. Okay, you got a motion, table this? Second?
I'll say.
No second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise, so we'll look at, uh, continue to look at the concrete situation at the, on the sidewalk. Next on our list is, uh, Tennessee, uh, Valley Youth Service Contract, we have them. Uh, if you've looked at, you see that we do not have a facility to take care of our youth, and we've had this, uh, ever since I can remember. Them, uh, they take care of our youth when we have, uh, when it's necessary that we have a youth, uh, that we need, uh, to, uh, hold for a while. So evidently, they've been very satisfactory with the sheriff and, uh, with the county for doing this, uh, all these years. So do we want to continue this service with the Tennessee Valley here?
It's a hundred and thirty-eight dollars per juvenile.
Yeah. Scott, are you aware of any problems we've had with them, uh, taking care of our, uh, allowing them to do this service for us?
No sir, I, I'm not aware of any, and quite frankly, I don't know if we have much choice.
Yeah, we don't know.
Yeah. We don't have many to go no way, do we?
Fortunately, not too many, we have too many.
Yeah, one, one's too many.
What would you say a year, how many, uh, year we got a year, do you have any?
I, I don't, I, I can, I can get it from Jennifer, but.
I mean, it's not, uh, uh, very many, is it?
Right.
Do I have a motion, we continue this service with Tennessee Valley?
I'll make a motion.
Make a motion. I'll say. You got a second, Phil? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise, I'd say it. Next, we have a list in our packet here also, the holidays for, uh, the county employees. Have you had time to look at this, and want to approve of this list?
It's the same as last year, isn't it Brooke?
Yes, same as last year. He'll read, well, he'll read it better than I do, so don't need to, you have it right over here. Do I have a motion to we, well, these holidays, two thousand and nineteen?
I'll make a motion.
Um, second?
One second.
No second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. I'd say it. You also have a. In here for a quote, our air conditioner down, our air conditioner at, airport has gone out. We have a quote, uh, uh, from Data's Air. For forty-nine hundred, fifty, fifty dollars to replace, uh, two and a half ton, uh, American Standard heat pump. With a two and a half ton train, uh. What's it, said replace two and a half ton American Standard heat pump with, uh, train heat pump, so I'm sure they're about the same quality. Uh. This, this is the only quote we got. Uh. I gather that's the only quote, uh, that. I gather this is the only quote, uh, that...
Has the water to airport complete the quit?
Yes. Is under the bid, uh, do we, uh, do, do they likely need to get more quotes?
I would think we need three of them, county-wise, cause, uh... We've got, uh, we've got major heat problems everywhere.
No, it's...
And, uh, you know, how many employees is at the airport, uh, facility using it daily?
One. Yeah, one man works down there. And of course, there's, uh, people in and out that, uh, there are people in and out that, uh, come in on our planes and things like this. But, uh, this is the only quote we have on the, right, right?
Yes, that's all I know. And actually, the pilots use the pilot lounge a good bit.
Yeah. But, uh, we could, we could get more quotes without, uh... So, uh... It's, uh, we're, without, not many down there. I mean, it's not gonna put too many in the cooler hot till we get, uh, another quote of Dayton. Uh, we could have some of the next meeting period, couldn't we?
Yes, sir. That'll, that'll be fine.
See, uh, see if you would, uh, see you that night. Before, uh, Mike, before we speak with you or after, uh, Scott, are you ready at this point in time to give us some, uh, up to date on our jail, our insurance? And, uh, also with the man's spirit we failed last time, what would be your suggestion?
Yes, sir. I think, uh, Mr. Seger is here to, to address the commission too, to explain, explain the proposal to y'all a little bit better than maybe I can. Then we can discuss it when he's, when he's finished, if that's okay with Chairman.
You want him to come back to the man?
Phil, Phil is here to address, address y'all.
Oh, he, okay. Phil, would you address it for him?
I'm a, I'm not an employee of Millennium Risk, but Terry Young, who is the CEO of Millennium Risk is a friend of mine, so I made an introduction to the previous commission. Um, y'all are responsible, and I'm sure y'all all know that inmate care, uh, healthcare when they're incarcerated in their jail. Um, Terry Young's company has a network called Alamed. And Alamed is a group of hospitals and doctors throughout the state that they have pre-negotiated contracts with. If you're in their network and you go by the pricing and all that, that he has, uh, negotiated with the doctors and hospitals throughout the state, which is huge discounts for the county. He has over, uh, ten thousand employees that, that use this service throughout Alabama. And there's over ninety-two hospitals through Alabama that's, that's part of the network. It is the, uh, second largest network compared to Blue Cross's PPO. Uh, so what he is, how I got to know Terry was through leadings and counties when I was chairman, uh, of the state and, and I've known him for over sixteen years. The league in four hundred and sixty-two cities uses his service throughout the state. So he is, uh, offering the other county, uh, to become part of this network that will allow y'all to run your bills through his network and, and receive the same discount that the municipalities and others that do throughout the state of Alabama. It would be a great savings to the county. Uh, he would be paying, uh, fifteen percent of the savings that he brings to y'all. And if he doesn't save any money, he don't pay him anything. Um, it's, and as far as the logistics goes, how to set it up, Scott, is your attorney who can address those. But, uh, it, it's a, it's a good deal for the, for the county. And you have the benefit of becoming part of a large group that has, uh, throughout the state that's already negotiated the contracts and all with doctors and hospitals through Alabama. So it's a repricing, uh, is what he will lay off to do. So bill, as example, maybe your bill was a hundred dollars and because you run it through his network, it might be, you pay fifty instead of a hundred. Uh, and that's what he's offering to the county.
How does this, uh, affect or do along with our medical insurance through Mr. Dr. Bates? Do we have to, uh, will this change, uh, any of the contract with him anyway?
Uh, yes, sir. And if, if that's okay with the chairman, I prefer to discuss that executive session. It's not gonna be a legal issue.
Okay. All right. Well, we'll look into that during executive session. Okay, Mr. Shaw?
Yes, sir. The only thing I really had, I think, on the agenda was the purchase of a garbage truck. And, uh, we estimate it to be about a hundred and sixty thousand. And we, we've just had one of ours go down, seven oh six, just motor went out. And it would feel like it's gonna be about thirty, thirty-five thousand dollars to repair it.
Is this a tandem you're asking for?
Well, we, we have lengthy discussion about that, and we decided to go just a regular, smaller truck.
I think it'd be better.
Yeah.
Count the roads.
I think you're right. And we, there's some areas that we need to be able to get in and out of, and we decided to go with the smaller truck.
And it would be less, is this the price for those?
Yeah, it's the national joint bid alliance. Um, you know, I sent Mr. Bates, Brooke, we're gonna get the auditors to review it to make sure we had everything in order, but it's a national, um, joint bid project that they do. And we wouldn't, we wouldn't do it locally. We would purchase it off that national bidder.
I think single axle will be better.
Yeah, yeah, we, we...
It's, it's tiring up some, it's tiring up some roads, the tunnels are, I might, you know...
Yeah, that twisting and turning on some of them, and, and we, we felt like we had the same opinion as y'all.
So is this the price for the single axle?
A hundred and sixty thousand. What we'd probably do is, is pay ten thousand down to, I think we can get a pretty good interest rate and operate on their money. And then we have about ninety thousand in the account, so we would, certainly wouldn't wanna, you know, use all that up.
You've got to plan on how to pay for it.
If, if people will pay their garbage bill. If they don't pay their garbage bill, we won't, we won't go to pay for it.
We'll take down my English salary.
We don't know if we're gonna that far.
This, uh, I know a lot to do with the garbage truck, not necessarily what it can do, but what it can do is a compaction on this thing, that'll put the top of the, as far as some of them, some of them are able to, uh, carry more because they can...
Yeah, we, we get the higher density compactions typically. You can get different pressures. You can get the standards and the high pressure. And we typically get the high pressure because we do sometimes occasionally go to West Jefferson and carry loads, so we wanna carry as much as we can when we haul. But the high density beds is normally what we get is a high, high density beds.
What's the comparison, Michael, the compaction, the weight of what this truck will carry to where a two axle will carry?
I can't tell you offhand. I don't know.
Ton wise?
Yeah, yeah. We, we, we send our bigger trucks. We try to end up our routes down that way and send them when we send them. Curtis, he, he handles our route and does all that for us. He could probably better speak to you about the details of that. He, he's the one that actually runs the numbers and the efficiencies and, and see what's worth best for us.
Well, we can't, we can't take off this and put on a bigger one to carry this load. You can't dump one end to the other.
No, no, no.
You gotta carry this one, I mean, when it gets loaded.
Whatever that, on that truck is what we're gonna keep. We're not gonna transfer it to another truck.
So we have, uh, funds to, uh...
Yeah, we, we would finance like we did our others. And I think that one, we have one house in July, or... So, you know, we, we try to rotate and keep some good stuff. We've got some, some old mags we're still running. And, and, you know, we just, we, you know, repairs is a big part of our expenses. And we're trying to do everything we can to, to minimize with, you know, we've had some trouble out of our newer trucks. You know, the electronics, we're gonna try to Kenworth this time. We feel like that, uh, the way they do their electronics and their wiring is a little bit simpler to work on and a little bit easier to understand, so we'll see.
I know at one point in time, our repairs were more than our payments.
Yeah.
How many, uh, light trucks are we running right now?
We're running four, four, four brands. And then we've got, um, two spares. We've got two, two thousand mags spare. And the one that we just went down was seven oh six, which has to have a motor. It's an oh-six model. Then we got thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen.
Oh-six is what happened?
That's down. The motor's out of it. It's gonna cost over thirty thousand dollars for the motor in. It's an oh-six, and I could take that money and put it towards...
We're planning on jumping there, or not, not gonna put an engine in it?
No, I, I think at this point, you know, let's, 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 if, if y'all vote to buy this truck, then, you know, hopefully we, we can bill away with some of our other maintenance expenses and, and put it towards the payment of this truck.
What kind of repairs is, uh, bad in?
Uh, it, it's not bad. It's not bad. And actually, we're changing, well, actually, it's kinda crazy. We've, we've got an old mac that we've been sitting on the yard bed, and we're putting it on. It's just a little bit of labor. We can actually put it on one of the other mags. And if we have to have it, we can run it. But all we're gonna have is like two guys' labor for two days. So that's a, you know, if we can get a truck that'll operate...
Be more favorable to us?
That's right. That's right.
They have a motion that we, uh, I guess they can put this in a formal motion. They have a second?
I'll say.
You have a second? Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Thank you, Jim.
Oppose likewise. Daniel brought a form in here that says that we're, what, what supply that we get from Fox that's gone out of business?
We get our supplies for our toilets and motors and everything from Fox, and they went out of business, and this company here wants us to...
Atlantic Coastal Supply from Greenville, North Carolina?
Yes, it is.
This is our, uh, do we need to, Scott, uh, we need to check any people out? I mean, is anyone else, I'm sure they run a truck through here. They wouldn't be...
Right.
Get rid. Who else? You know, anyone else?
The salesman used to work for Fox. He, he went from Fox right after they quit to that company there. He's the one that contacted...
So you're mad at salesman? Same salesman?
Yes, same.
For different company. Prices, prices, uh, anymore or less?
About the same.
About the same?
Yes, sir.
We can, what kind of contract do we enter into with these people, Scott? Do you have, uh, you can cancel this at any time you find out it there?
I would assume that we could cancel it.
Could you look at this and?
Yes, sir.
And give us, uh, uh, next, uh, board, can we wait next, uh, board meeting, uh, board to rule on this? So you would let this enter contract, so... At this point in time, we would, uh, we would need to go into executive session of, uh, good name character of, uh, someone, so, uh, uh, what, thirty minutes, Scott?
Yes, sir. That's...
They have a motion. We go back into regular section.
I'll make it motion.
A second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye? Okay, uh, I think all we have, uh, left on the agenda, something came up, uh, uh, on the, uh, you, you don't, uh, do you have time on, uh, taking grave for a personal, uh, cemetery?
It's, uh, we've had a gentleman die there at home, lives outside of city limits. And, uh, they called me from the funeral home. His family's requesting, uh, that he'll be buried at home. And, uh, they had talked to the health department and bothered Stan and Scott to say more about it, that the county has to okay it before the health department can okay it or something like that.
That's right. Y'all okay it, and the health department will give their okay and...
So you're making a motion upon him getting, uh, uh, paperwork that, uh, that we will provide that, uh...
Yeah, they're taking their own...
Now here, second on that?
I'll second.
All right. All in favor, say aye? Oppose likewise, so we'll take care of any other, any other thing before we adjourn. They have a motion we adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right.
Don't forget to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com/fortyninecountynewstv.